Girls, time to wake up, ship up, shape out. It is time for the budget meeting for the board trustees about their community college. We need to call Rolf. Nope, it's no Rolf call. Forrest will be here shortly, but we're going to go ahead and turn it over to Kent, who will begin to explain the budget. Again.
I missed so much.
Tell us where you're going to start, what page? With this or this or this?
A handout which is on the screen on, I'm trying to kind of move the document along on the screen, but it's a, just a paper handout, it's about 25 pages from back here. Says budget work session April 25, 2022. Topics for discussion. We want to talk, spend some time talking about the budget timeline. Then we'll, there's some information on our cash reserves. There's a three-year projection of the operating budget. And then we want to spend some time talking about the information requests from trustee Winslow for budget and personnel cost information.
And I want to add just one other thing before you leave. I want to talk about the commencement activities and stuff for just a few minutes too, before everybody gets up and walks away. That's not, it's sort of.
So just hopping down here to page two, which I'm up here. On the anticipated timeline, so there's some, you know, we have quite a few things scheduled. There's some major decisions, obviously, that the trustees will need to be making in the next couple of months. And so I've listed out the various meetings here. I would say just the two major decisions that are going to be coming up are obviously going to be the local taxes to be levied, that's the big one. And so kind of keep your eye, our eye on the prize there. The other one we really need to think about is what the board will support for compensation increases for the employees. And we'll talk about those here on the timeline. So the next, after today, the next meeting will be May 10th, which is a regular finance or board meeting. And of course, we'll have a finance committee. And then on May 23rd, it'll be another, right now, we have another work session on the schedule. June 14th is a regular meeting. Then on, hi Forrest, we're just getting started more. Page one of this information that we, or page two of that information. So on June 15th, and we'll get information from the county clerk. Giving us our revenue neutral rate. We, we know pretty much what that revenue neutral rate is going to be. If, in terms of taxes to be levied, it's going to be the same as the taxes that were levied for the current year. And then it will be a matter of what the official estimated valuation is that determines the revenue neutral rate. And I might back up a minute, just to talk about the, the information in general that's in this document I handed out. Obviously, we didn't give you any of this information in advance. We want to walk through it. We're not going to, there's not going to be any decisions that we expect to have today. The real purpose is just to start communication going into this final phase of the budget, both for the trustees to have communication among your, your group and for the trustees to have communication with the administration. So we have clear direction and there's obviously going to be various points where that communication will happen. So that's kind of why I wanted to walk through the calendar to get started. If you're not real familiar with the revenue neutral rate, we'll get into that a little more as we move through here. So then on June 27th, there's another work session scheduled. And then on June 30th, we have our accounting close. And also I might mention that during June, the administration normally has a strategic planning retreat, visit with Dr. Carl, just a little bit about that. And we're going to have some more conversation in our VP group about that. So we'll start working on the strategic plan for the following year budget. Okay, so we're at June 30th and that's our close. And then the regular board meeting is July 12th. And I'd like to talk just a little bit about that timeframe. Because we bring you back a preliminary report on the close, on the 22 budget. And one of the main things there is, you know, what's going to be our cash reserve from the operating budget? We've budgeted for a 2%, no, 4% unspent budget, which is about $2 million. I did some cursory, cursory analysis that I might, I think there's a chance we'll be there. It's a real busy time for Kerry and the accounting crew. It takes about four days, I guess, to actually close the books. We have July 4th in there. And so coming up with the preliminary report really is a, is a busy time for the accounting staff, I'll just say that. And at that time, the board really needs to make a decision on this revenue neutral rate. And if, if the board does choose to exceed the revenue neutral rate, obviously, the preliminary recommendation that we brought forward, the administration brought forward in the March information would call for exceeding the revenue neutral rate. Also, some, some municipal entities and colleges, in fact, most of them on the, from the recommendation from the Department of Administration choose to publish that they, they will exceed the revenue neutral rate just to protect from the actual taxes going down in November because the, if you would, because the valuation estimate that we receive at the end of June can change between June and November. And if that goes down, then the revenue neutral rate would go down because it's actually based on the mill levy rather than the taxes. So we can talk more about that if you have questions about it. But that will be a decision that will have to be made or should be made, well, would have to be made by July 12th. So we need to think about these meetings that we have in between here to have the board come to a consensus among yourselves, whether or not you plan to exceed the revenue neutral rate.
Can I correct in saying that just because we decide that we may exceed it so that notice goes out, doesn't mean that we have to exceed it.
That's correct. It's, it's like the notice of public hearing, it sets a max, the notice of public hearing sets a maximum. You don't have to go that far, you can always go less.
I would argue that whatever we set, we're going to keep.
Oh, yeah.
Set something higher, say that we both possibly do it later.
So that'll be a decision that board as a whole need to make by July 12th. So, yeah, so then on the 15th, if we, if the decision is made to exceed, I would need to have that certified down to the county clerk, let's see. To note there on July 15th, if in fact, the decision was made to publish intent to exceed, the county clerk would take all of the, all of those notices from all the entities in the county and the county clerk then would be responsible for notifying the taxpayers per the statutes. July 25th is a work session, a normal day for a work session. I don't think it's scheduled at this time, but it's the Monday, you know, Monday, two weeks after the board meeting. So it would normally be a work schedule, work session in the schedule that you've maintained this year. And we probably will need to make that a special meeting and approve the notice of public hearing at that time. And then at the August meeting, there's nothing, usually in the past, we've had the public hearing at the regular August meeting. That will be possible if we don't exceed the revenue neutral rate. But if we exceed the revenue neutral rate, then per the statutes, you can't have the, you can't have the hearing prior to August 20th. So we would have to push back the, the date. And the 22nd would be a, a practical date to have that. So again, a lot depends on whether that board chooses to exceed the revenue neutral rate. If you do, then there would, we would combine, there, there has to be two separate hearings, but they can happen at the same time. So if, if the revenue neutral rate was exceeded, I would say the best thing to do is on August 22nd, have both the revenue neutral rate hearing and the public hearing for the legal budget. So.
The special meeting being on the 22nd?
Yes.
Okay, well, you realize that we have a special meeting. We don't include public speaking, so we would have to vote to revise the agenda for special meetings to include public.
Yeah, the, that me, I would intend that to be a special meeting only for, I mean, you could add other topics, but particularly for public hearing. So public hearing in and of itself means that there.
I'm just telling you, I got told.
Okay.
That it was going to be like it always has been. And when we have a special meeting, we do not address public concerns. So I would, I would like to come to a point at some meeting, maybe the next one, to change that. So maybe I'll motion that at the next meeting, regular meeting.
The, the public hearings always have an opportunity for public.
Any special.
I would agree with Julie that anytime we have a special meeting, we should just have a little line item of public speaking.
Let's, let's keep going.
I think that's what she said.
It's a discussion item. We've got a ton of stuff to cover in, in a special, in our work session today. Let's not get sidetracked on something that we're not going to talk about.
I don't want to.
I spoke for 15 seconds, I think.
Flashlight.
Any, any other questions about the budget calendar? If not, I'd like to, to move on to the next topic. Hey, we're right on time. So.
I set my timer, Ken, I'm going to watch the clock.
So I wanted to spend some time going over our cash reserves. I know we've had discussion on that at March 28th, work session where we presented the update. There were questions about it. Obviously, with the per funds in particular, our cash reserves have increased over the past, the past couple of years more than normal. And I'd like to, on, on page three, I've done a little table that estimates where I think approximately we may end up, but on page four, five and six, kind of like to draw your attention to that. These are our document pages from last July, which show on page 30, or not, it's actually page four with the handwritten number. It was page 30 of the report last year. And somehow I've gotten off here. So you can see that our cash on hand at the end of last year was $30,688,000. The reconciled balance of our funds on page five at the end of last year was $29,556,965. I think I said that backwards. The operating, the fund balances were the $30 million on page four. The actual cash in the bank was the $29 million that shows on page five. And then our, excuse me, our liabilities and encumbrances are on page six. And there was a little unusual situation where our receivable for federal funds got shown as a negative liability there. But so the, the fund balances last year of the $30 million, I would say of that, about $7 million was of her funds that we'd received and were just on hand at that time. So I just wanted to give you that background. Again, that's, it's quite a bit higher than normal for our, our year in cash. So I'd like to go back to page three. I don't know if you have any questions on that I could.
And we're spending down those her funds on, like the, the HVAC and some of the, that money will be spent.
Right, and we're going to go through some of that as we walk down through this sheet on page three. So the, the first value there, $7,742,000, that's the operating fund. So the budget book to look like this that we gave you in March, if you go back and look at the operating budget at that time, that is the balance that we had expected to end up with this year in the operating funds. We have some designated funds, various designated funds. In the general fund that I'm estimating will be a total of about $1.3 million. Again, if you, if you want to see the detail of that, it's on page S1 of this notebook or booklet that we gave you back in March. So there's, it's a whole page of different designated funds in the general fund. And then I'm estimating about $500,000 for the designated PTE funds. Those are the tech area designated funds. And then you'll see the designated her funds here, the 2.3 million, which will likely still be in, in the general designated fund for her funds at the end of the year. And one thing that I want to mention there, there's several things that we've talked about using this fund for. We're going to look some at deferred maintenance later on. Also, Ryan Murray will be giving us an update on our insurance at the May board meeting. So far, we've set aside half a million dollars for a reserve for deductibles. It's likely that the deductible this year for one event could reach up to 1.1 million because of the difficulty we're having in securing property insurance with a reasonable deductible. So I just keep that in mind.
And when they interrupt, when you're looking at the, this 2.3 million, it's on page, this list is on page seven in your handout. It's stapled.
Yeah, thank you, I meant to mention that.
What do you attribute the biggest doubt of our ability to cover our losses with insurance or an increase like this in premiums this year? I'm saying there's going to be substantial.
I think it's, it's two things. It's mostly, it's the insurance market in general for institutions, such as ours in this region. Basically, what's often referred to as tornado alley. I think, again, we've talked a lot about this, but about seven years ago, we had a $7 million hail claim. I know we're probably not the only institution that's had that. So the market, I think, is reacting to that. I'm not an expert in that and Ryan will be able to, to talk better than I when he meets with you next month. But that, that's the biggest thing and our. Well, inflation is driving it somewhat, you know, because property replacement costs are going up significantly. I mean, you could look at the housing market. Yeah. So there's.
What about the liability and?
I don't have any additional knowledge about liability and, and had, as far as I know, we're not looking at a big change there. But again, I'm kind of, Ryan will be able to update you more. The applications are in process right now. And so he hasn't received all the information back from the various carriers that he's working with. So kind of going down the, there's a typo, but the academic, should say academic, Academic Program Development Fund.
Do the information technology.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm jumping way ahead. The Information Technology Fund and that's, there's a spending plan. And I don't know, you know, if you have questions or Bill wants to make comments on that. And that's on page eight of the information. I had to kind of put this in three different sections to get it to print on one page here. But Phil, did you want to talk about that?
So as we've talked, the, the technology IT fund is what we're leveraging to be able to maintain and continue with our upgrades and replacements as they come due, as to not have to tap back into bill levy to, to make that happen. So what I put out there on page eight, it's, it's about the, it takes to 2030. Those are the types of projects that we're likely going to see come out, the types of replacements we're going to see. Disaster recovery backups, so there's changes in how we handle that that's going to take place next year. We have to add more storage array, we've got desktops. I mean, just, those are the types of things that it has to get spent on as we, as those kind of replacement cycles come through. If you look down the network, the wired and wifi, which is slated for $350,000 for 2028. Now that puts us 10 years out from when we did this last, this last change. So that's kind of lifespan of, of this technology. And the plan is to utilize the technology fee that we, or the technology access charge that we collect as well as, you know, just whatever other that we have in, inside this fund, I'll pay for all that. Over the next eight years, I mean, if, if, if we're able to accomplish everything on that list over the next eight years, you're looking at nearly $5 million worth of stuff, but it's money that, that we are able to save up that technology fund to make that happen, so that we don't have to go to the tax. That's fine.
I appreciate that comment, Shelby, because that's, that's sort of what we're, we're here for, to show you this in general, give you a chance to, to look at it and come back with questions. Not that we wouldn't entertain questions today, but there's quite a bit to go through. So going down the list, the next item is the Academic ProMac Program Development Fund. There's 370,000 in there now. And again, on page nine of the information that I've given you, Dr. Neville has shown in, as an anticipated spending plan. And again, Tom, I don't know if you want to speak to this, but identified about $220,000 of items.
Yeah, some of these things are, some of these items are definitely directly related to program startups or some other initiatives that we've started at college. There is, as you can see, we, we launched the direct enroll initiative, so we're kind of retooling that. And I think the last report that Kelly gave us was we, we've spent about $6,000 with our consultants at this point. Our IR request for student data, I know Eson's here, if you guys have any questions about exactly what that's going to entail. But that, that's, that's funds have been committed out of this, this, out of the spending plan. We've, we've upped our OER game a little bit here, trying to see about how we can again, further, more costs, deferred costs from our students for textbooks, reducing those costs. As you remember, last month, we were at 1.8 million so far in savings. And diesel tech, which you all approved last, last board meeting. So these are funds above and beyond what we're able to spend with our, with, with some of our maintenance effort, effort funding. So I remember it's a new program, so there's going to be some startup costs. We're looking at some banners, some signage that'll go in town and on campus. Those haven't been committed yet. We've mentioned, we're, we're looking at marketing college in Wichita on buses that hasn't been committed yet. And with our new mobile broadcast trailer, there's going to be some equipment needed that will be related to our mass comm program. So again, these are program specific related funds. And yeah, I mean, we do have funding to spend, but you know, as we start thinking about additional programs or future programs that may be coming as a result of shift in industries and things. You know, we want to have some, some startup money if there's, there's a need for any types of those programs that might need some startup funds.
Are you pretty committed to this, to this exact list?
Everything on the right is committed, yeah. Those, those items have been, anything that has no, no amount there, we have not committed to.
There's an amount, but it's not committed, it's not been spent in a program.
I just had my two cents, I learned there last month that like more than $25,000 in advertising plus a wire for that. Plus something else, I think as a board, I would like to discuss if we want to grow $100,000 in advertising. I would like to discuss that.
Yes.
And there will be time to do that.
Let's see, $50,000 for advertising on buses in Wichita, just made me think of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, obviously, I mean, if you know, there's a budget for marketing next year, we wouldn't have to commit.
Doing the same thing, it's like Cali summer and they've got a tiger or bear, I don't know what it is, surfing. Come here for summer classes and like. They're not going to hit you in Wichita, but I mean, so just, yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, there'll definitely be time to visit about that. Other comments on the development fund?
Yeah, when, when, when would we have time to discuss this?
Well, you know, going back to the calendar, you know, I would say the next workstation would be, I think the best time, that'll give everybody time to kind of absorb some of this information. And we need to get into it by that time because we'll start moving towards that date when you have to prove the revenue neutral. Date when you have to prove the revenue neutral or not. So I would say the next workstation would, would be good or. Yeah, that's probably the best time. I do want to talk about a little later. Well, the, the actual board meeting in May, but that would be very specific topic. I do need to go back or would like to go back. There's one, one figure that I wanted to point out on page seven. At the bottom. This is the HRF designated fund again. And these monies came into the college. For various reasons, like we were able to claim loss of revenue. So we took the federal money, put it money and put it right into the general fund. And that way. It becomes general fund money and the board has the right to spend that as you choose. One of the things that. We would like to have further discussion on, and again, this is going to be at one of these upcoming meetings. Is that. Way back when we first started getting the HRF money, we had talked about setting aside $800,000 for what we called. Service recognition awards at that time. So I don't want to. This, it probably isn't the proper time to talk about that, but I just want to point out that that is one of the things that we will want to talk to you about. As we go through talking about compensation for the employees and so forth.
Some of the institutions with those her funds gave service recognition awards to their employees. Because of the impact of COVID and because they had to change classes and working, you know, working situations and all that sort of stuff. These funds would, would go to the people that were directly impacted during that COVID timeframe, not necessarily the employees that have come to us since then, but.
And which line is that?
It's clear at the bottom.
Page seven.
Oh, right down there. Thank you.
It's for like employees who, who spend about it. 80 to 100 hours that week trying to get everything all ready to. To go forward online and things like that.
Yeah, it will. And some of the institutions gave them for that spring semester, some for spring and fall semester, just because of disrupted work schedule. You know, all that sort of stuff.
But we didn't link it.
Five 16, why do we keep having BKD at 115? I thought it was like 111 last time. Well, we approved this 40-ish.
This is an estimated amount that was in here. A lot of these are estimates at this time. And that would include the other modules. You may be right. I may need to update that. I'll go back and look at it.
The, jumping back to designated general fund, you have 1.3 million refers to page S1. I don't see.
No, it's. That's just an estimate of where I think we may end up. What I showed you there was information from a previous. Report. And it just gives a kind of an idea. We don't know where all of those are going to end up. So I just rounded to an estimate that I thought might be.
The balance as of the end of February was 7.2 million and you're suggesting 1.3 million.
Well, of that 7.2, a lot of that is the HRF money. So I split.
I just have one quick question.
Yes.
I read an article in one, I think it was the prison. About mold in one of the buildings. I just picked it up and read it. Don't look at me. I didn't write it. So tell me how that fares. When is that going to be? Because honestly.
Working on it right now, aren't we?
Before anything else on here.
I don't think we, Ireland.
That article was actually written last fall, early fall and was reposted again. That building, 300, it was the one we're doing the major HVAC upgrade, total replacement.
Okay.
So it's in process now to finish this part of June.
To be done?
Yes. And the other area was 200 building and it was all built for restoration.
So it's fixed. It won't happen again? Or did it just get cleaned up?
I hope not.
Yes.
It's temporarily a bit.
What happens is. You know, especially the high committee in the summer, the eating areas running all the time, we're at least learning off more than it should be. Those offices were all the vacant over the summer. My staff wasn't going in at that time. Our policy has changed. We're walking through every office every day. Now it's verified. Things are good and working orders, but we just basically left those offices and did check. Uh, but yes, everything, all, all those areas have been addressed in the projects.
In the 300.
All, all, all the mold's been taken care of. It hap, it happens periodically. Our facilities people are really good. When we get notified of it, they have a restoration company and, and you deal with it. It happens in institutions like this periodically.
Especially, especially when you have the equipment that's old, 50 years old. It is only a two bike system. It doesn't have both heating and cooling at the same time.
So we're going to address that at the time?
Well, and two buildings we are, 300, 500 have the upgrades. You still have the old two bike systems in the 600, the 400, the 200.
Actually, we're going to talk about deferred maintenance here in just a minute. So thanks.
Just the two, four and 600 building will be left as far as the updated systems.
Seven.
700. It's all the older buildings.
So us freezing in here, we're going to get. All the way.
This building doesn't have.
Yeah. And sunlight.
Pneumonia is a side effect, but it helps.
But no.
We're kind of moving on down our, our list here. I think the next item would be the facilities fund. This. This is shown on page 10 of your information. This was the, the report that was in the March update. And you can see the various items that were planned on, on spending about $876,000 this year. To take care of various items here. And we had another 250,000 that we're going to put in from the. The. Cash reserves from last year. So we, we think we may have a, a balance left over there. But I also know that Ireland's come up with some new projects. So that 250,000. Maybe spent down to zero. There's a lot of. These are what I would call. Mid, mid level projects are not the million dollar renovations. They're, they're smaller projects. That we have to deal with on an annual basis. The next item is the insurance deductible. We have set aside 500,000 and I just made a note there that we really probably need to talk about. Whether or not we want to set it aside another half a million dollars on that. Then we have the strategic innovation reserve, a little over $2 million. One thing we want to talk a little bit about here and. Know we're. Using a lot of our time here, but we, we've taken a look at. Our reporting out of our banner processes. And we think there's a lot of improvements that could be made. Similar to what we're doing with the. Contribution margin analysis that BKD is working with us. But you know, just within finance. We've identified three areas we'd like to get improvement on that are really manual processes. One of it is the, the payroll. Budgeting and reconciliation. Carrie has the budget. Analyst every year prepares a worksheet. We're going to talk a little bit more about this one in particular later. Where we manually list all the individual employee budget amounts. To tie back into the departmental budgets at that time. It's a very manual, time consuming process. Also, the, our inventory process and our scholarship process are quite time intensive. And so also in the HR and payroll, we think there's. Number of processes and maybe even enrollment management. Bill Young and I talked a little bit about this. And, and we think. That it would be beneficial to bring in an IT consultant who specializes in its kind of activity to do. A business process analysis and then give us a prioritized list of where the, there could be. Software company consultants who would work with us with the banner system to help us automate many of our processes. And just in kind of looking at generally, this isn't something that we've spent a lot of time looking at yet, but. We feel like maybe over the next three years. Investing about $300,000 a year would be beneficial. And so we're, we don't have a full blown plan on this. I don't know, Bill, if you want to speak to it all, but we, we do think tentatively that might be a good use for some of this money.
Yes, there's an opportunity to, after we go through the, the, the business process piece of it, to engage staff augmentations of consultants to actually get. The reports, the dashboards, the. Information built in a way so that it's easier to access for everybody involved. So we'll get information plus it's easier to get it and do that. We've ran into capacity issues. I mean. It's like a lot of companies do as far as having to prioritize what we're spending our time on. I don't have. A ton of capacity right now for, to dedicate people to just kind of build those reports at this point. So that's, that's what this is, is referring to. The challenge that you have is it's not like. You know, you have to be very specific within banners. Like you'd have to be specific if you're a company that uses SAP or something else. And we've got to find the right company that can help us. Not just with the business process analysis piece, but then with the development of the.
So again, this is one of those items where as we move through this budget calendar process, we would plan to. Provide something a little more concrete as we move through. Moving on. To the deferred maintenance. Fund and actually deferred maintenance capital projects and capital fund, the next three all kind of deal with similar. Themes as a major facilities, either. Upgrading our facilities or taking care of deferred maintenance. And there's, there's two real supplemental items that we wanted to talk to you about here. We've got a, a deferred maintenance list that I. Want to show you. It's, it's in the booklet here, but I also wanted to give Tom Borrego a little time here because we've had some conversation. And there is an opportunity if the, based on the, the lease agreement that we have on the culinary building. That if we wanted to use some of these funds, we could actually. Purchase that building. Tom, would you like to just take some time to walk through that?
Yeah. So for the new board. The new board members, last year, the board entered, entered into a lease agreement with the foundation. For the use of the new culinary building that's being built in Andover. And so the foundation's responsibility was to raise. Funds and, and finance the, the cost of the building with the option for the, the college to purchase the building. At some point during the lease, there's a 10 year lease and then you have an opportunity to purchase it with two, five year extension. So. There's a total of possible 20 years of lease. You can purchase that building anytime during that time. And so as we're going through our fundraising. We're having some success and we were, our target was to try to keep the, the, the financing component somewhere between a million and a million and a half. That million. If we financed it a million, it was going to be a lot less than the lease that you were already paying at Boston Rec. And if it was 1.5 million, it's going to be a little bit more, but it was in the ballpark. And so our goal was to keep the lease in that, in that range so that at some point, well, well, the lease is gone, you could continue to pay on it if you wanted to. Or at some point the college could purchase that, that property and then own that asset. And then the foundation would be done with that building. So we're looking, reviewing, reviewing these funds. We saw that there was a possibility that this might be an opportunity. For the college to look at purchasing the building. Once we kind of know what that hard number is, but want to remind the board that that option is available.
And, and share with them just a little bit about what, if, if we did go ahead and purchase. Can you share a little bit about that?
Yeah. So as you know, Scott and Betsy Reddler are, are lead donors on this. And as Scott has been looking at. Our program in culinary, he's also been thinking about our program in hospitality. And so he has began, began conversations with us about the possibility of he and other partners going in to build another building. Just east of the culinary building and that part, that partnership would create a business there, but would create space in that building for our hospitality program where the, which the college could lease. And use that space, but he would use the 1.5 million that he's. Provided to the foundation in financing and move that if the college were to purchase this property, move that 1.5 over, over into that, into that project and get that one kicked off and going. So a lot of opportunity there. And with some funds available, it may be a nice time to try to think that one through and see if it's, it's worth doing.
And how many hours is that hospitality? That's a certificate program, correct? And it's how many hours?
Tom, do you know, I don't know that off the top of my head. I, I don't know that.
Is it a one year? I was thinking it was a one.
I'm curious to ask also, from a lot of our classrooms, they're not busy eight hours a day. I want to know how busy is our culinary. Building whereas it could not, could not hold hospitality and culinary go if it was scheduled.
There's two classrooms in that building and culinary. And so, yeah, I would be scheduled out and, and according to the chef's goals. I mean, I don't know the specifics on the use of that, those rooms, but I suspect it would be used. Yeah.
But I mean, I stopped by construction the other day and it was, I guess a Friday, but it wasn't, there was no one there at all. I mean, I know we have space available. It's kind of more than needed to.
Tom will have to.
I would ask, Kim, what for $2 million building, we're being offered to lease it for 22, 50 months, something like that.
It's the amount that you're being, is, is the amount that was budgeted for your lease over Boston Rec. And so of course, we didn't know at the time we were doing, we didn't know where that.
Contract would say that said it would not exceed that.
Right, right. So if it was less, it'd be less, but it wouldn't be anymore.
Right, right. That was about 30,000 a year. It was like 25,000.
28.
Just in that ballpark. So this is obviously.
I mean, is that a.
So 28,000 a year is what you're paying at least. So what are they offering to sell you the building at?
1.9 million.
At one point. Around 1 million to 1.67, kind of in that range, depending upon how the finance or the fundraising goes. Our target right now is 1.6 in financing. And so it, it could be less than that. There's a lot of dominos that are in line right now to help with the cost.
Yeah, it would, I would need, it's too big of a range to say whether or not that would be a good idea, but obviously it's just going to come down to. You know, what kind of cap rate you're dealing with, what kind of return you're looking at, and then just the long term risk of owning it versus renting it. So. Once I have all that information.
Sorry, Tom, but I don't appreciate. The foundation built it. They did what they want. We take it or leave it. And now we can buy it. So it's just, it's a go around the board to build a building and then get you to buy it anyway later. But they get to, they get to.
You don't have.
We don't have to. I understand. But this is what I said earlier. Then we didn't get to pick the layout. We didn't get to design anything. We didn't get to have any say in it.
Yeah.
But do we want to own one more building and have that much more liability?
Right. And that all depends on, like I said, what the, the lease rate is and what the lease says. I mean, is it triple net? Who's paying? So we're paying maintenance anyway. Yeah. So we're paying maintenance on it anyway, if it's triple net. So, you know. Yeah. Like I said, it would be a numbers game at that point because ultimately you've got. No offense, kind of a weird building and a location. It's not really conducive to what it is because you put it in front of an apartment complex in a retail place. So. You know, to me, that wasn't, office wasn't really highest and best use. That's not a dig on the college at all. That's the developers. I let that go. office wasn't really highest and best use. That's not a dig on the college at all. That's the developers. I let that go and that's whatever. It's great location for for us as far as visibility. But if it ceases to be a culinary school, like if this doesn't work out, then what's its use after that? It's going to be really hard to switch to another use and have it be a retail center.
I don't think we can. I think we're like.
Let's, let's, this is going to.
Yeah. Well, no, because everybody else got to make one. So the only comment I want to make is I'm more concerned also about the MOUs that we're already up.
That's a passive. Let's move on.
No, it's not. And here's why.
You beefed about this before. This is not the topic we discussed. If if we're leasing the building, we can only use it for culinary, but we.
Yeah, I really.
We're going to move on.
So I'm the only one for us that doesn't.
No, you're not the only one. You're the only one that's spoken. Shelby had a comment, Kim had a, Shelby had a question.
And I didn't get to make mine.
No one else did either. We're moving on.
I wanted to make one.
I know you wanted to.
Maybe no one else did, but I did.
Staying on schedule. We're going to talk about it later.
You know what's not in there?
We are talking about this.
The construction program at Rose Hill that we're going to get ready to rent again or rent from now on, like the other MOUs like Winfield, we pay a portion of those rents. We need from Kim to sit down and say, here they are. Here's all of them in total for all of our MOUs or whatever agreement that we have. Here's our obligations before I can decide whether to have another building. That's all the rest of it. Thank you for us.
Don't be sarcastic.
I'm just saying, thank you.
You're not thanking me at all. You're being sarcastic. Let's move on.
Okay, I'll be sarcastic. Thanks a lot for us.
They're going down the list here. We get to deferred maintenance, capital projects.
Stop. Kim, please. We are not 12.
What did you just call me?
I was calling at random lots of people that might be listening to me on the phone.
What did you just refer to?
I didn't refer to you as anything.
You guys, because I heard something different.
Well, you know what? I heard somebody else motioning for a different chair too, but I ignored it.
You're going to refer to me with profanity in the middle of one of our work sessions. I'm going to shut you down.
You know what?
We have to take.
You don't need that excuse to shut me down. You do it every time we come.
I am.
You have another reason.
Professional with you. I have never used profanity towards you.
No, you just get up at a meeting and announce what we're going to do on behalf of the union, on behalf of the board.
And you took me to task for that at the meeting. I have never used profanity.
And anybody else who wants to talk gets to, and I don't.
Same in return.
I appreciate.
I would appreciate as the president of this college that we move on, that we be civil to each other and we be respectful. This is ridiculous. This is a poor reflection to anybody that's watching and listening about how we manage our meetings. And nothing against anybody that's sitting here, but let's move on and let's be professional. Let's use our time productively. This is ridiculous.
I agree.
Okay, moving on. The next three items on the list here, deferred maintenance, capital projects and capital, again, these all kind of relate back to facilities. And don't want to take a great deal of time. We we don't have enough time, but on page 11, Ireland has prepared a list of critical deferred maintenance items, which you can see comes to about $5.7 million. And we would like to at some point have more consideration on this and talk about how we might be able to use some of the one time reserve money that we have on hand for these items. And
Can you join?
That's on page 11.
And then, Kim, tell me one more time on BG. So like, let's just the the first one, BG Stadium, H back controls 25,000. Is that divided between 490?
Ireland, you want to talk about that a little bit quickly?
Normally, the item that is BG, the entity, DNA D would pay for. The entity doesn't have a fair amount of money. When the stadium actually froze last winter and we lost all the water and had all the damage and big insurance claim. Since we were closer to the stadium, all the heating and air and stuff was given to to us. This here is a request for $25,000 to actually put web controls on it. So my staff can monitor it 24/7 during winter and summer, to make sure that that doesn't happen.
So what would happen is if we get this far, we would bring you a specific request where go through the normal purchasing process for this.
Well, and it it would be a conversation we would have at EFABC as well because I I feel like EFABC should bear the cost, basically, in order to allow, in order to allow the right oversight because the web controls then would would provide, you know, additional oversight and stuff. So so it, Kent and I talked about this when we went through the list. And it would, it would certainly be a conversation at EFABC about that.
So the other item that shows on this list here is the Campus Life Fund, which we estimate will have about $4.5 million dollars at the end of this year. That's, that's pretty normal. It's a, it's a healthy balance. We do know that the bookstore is not making money like it used to, so I think it's a balance that we need to see about protecting.
Just had a little thought the other day when we said we've saved the students $1.9 million or $2 million over the last couple of years since we implemented that. Perhaps we should just raise it $5 or $10 and we can also make a little money out of ourselves, not only save the students' money, but also have another.
Some of that is built into the OERs and and the other, there's, there's a couple of things. There's OERs and then we've contracted for other electronic books. And on all of those, there is a profit built in for the bookstore. It's just not, it's not the cash counted. It was five to 10 years ago.
All I'm saying is that's $2 million we passed along and saving to the students.
Right. Also.
And we're not increasing tuition this year. We can't just take all our extra money.
Yeah.
Charge more for our product. Every product we pay for now, it's consumers is 10% higher per.
Right.
That's all.
Yeah, it's reasonable to look at.
OER is.
It's.
Just think of it as.
Open educational resource.
I can't remember it either.
Basically a book that the faculty creates in an electronic mean, a book and other course materials.
Well, that's what I thought, but I kind of, you know.
But also they said the physical books that we're ordering now are much more reasonable than in the past.
So I would like to, I I think it would be good for us to move on because.
If student wants to buy the the physical copy for the English book, it's additional $10.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's, that's.
We're at the bottom of page three. They're talking about the campus life funds, the four and a half million dollars. So I think hopefully this gives you an idea of where we're at on the cash reserves. And again, as you have time to to look at this and have more specific questions, we can address this as we go through the rest of the budget development process towards the board decision that will need to be made in June and July. So now that we're through that part, I'd like to move on to the operating budget. So on the operating budget, which starts on page 12, 13, and 14, well, starts on page 12. What I've done here is I like to focus on, again, so I mentioned early on, two key decision points that the board will need to be making over the next couple of months. One is the compensation for employees. And the second is the amount of taxes to be levied. And what I've done here is create three different scenarios. And in order to do that, I had to make certain assumptions. These scenarios look at the our unencumbered cash over the next three years. So I've had to make estimates not only for next year, which we gave you the preliminary budget recommendation for next year at the March 28 meeting. And then I've created assumptions for the 24 and 25 year. So if you look on page 12, just kind of go through this. I made assumptions about credit hour increases, tuition rates, like for this basic scenario, I've kept the credit hours the same. I know we could argue about that or, excuse me, debate that, whether that's an appropriate amount or not. What I'd really like to do is just focus on and isolate these two variables, the compensation and the the taxation. So I've created these variables here and the first three pages here, 12, 13, and 14 are based on the 23, 20, 19, the 23 year being exactly what we presented on March 28. So that includes a devaluation increase going to additional revenue. You can see that on lines 10, 11, and 12 there of this particular scenario. We'll look at a scenario later on where we don't take the valuation increase. So I'd rather not address that right now, but focus on the salary increase. The salary increase that we showed in the March 28 valuation or excuse me, presentation was 3%. So going through and looking at that, this this creates sort of a baseline, this first scenario. And so if you look on page 13, let me bring that up here. The actually page 14. I'm trying to hear. It's kind of awkward having these in PDFs. This is the actual computations that are created by those variables. And you can see down here on line 29, the unencumbered cash ending balance for 2023, that's on again, let me find it here. Page 14, line 29. And we come down to an ending unencumbered cash balance of $7,334,000. Under these variables and scenarios, that would go down the next year to 6,782,000 and the following year to 6,306,000. So if you put that in a graph, which is what's on page 13, and compare that to the 10% of expenditures, which is on, again, on page 14, line 30, 32, you get a graph that looks like this on page 13. So what we're showing here, and again, I know we're going to go through this quickly, but we'll be able to come back later on and speak more to this. You get a graph that looks like this, the the cash balance, projected cash balance is declining here. The 10% of expenditures is increasing because the overall budget for the next two years increases in this scenario. So to come out on the 25 year with the unencumbered cash estimate under these circumstances or scenario variables to be about close to equal to the 10 and a half percent of expenditure. That's what this graph represents.
What it doesn't represent to me is it needs to be added what our students have decreased in.
This is, I'm not sure, I'm just focusing on some variable. We really don't have time here. Now, we can, we can take time at an upcoming work session to go through this in detail. I just want to show you what this graph under these scenario, under these variables would create. We could spend all night going through different variables if we wanted to. I'm just saying, this is, this is a a set of circumstances. What I want to demonstrate to you is what would happen if we change two particular variables. So I'd like to move on to the next set here, which is the variables being shown on.
Maybe just make a comment.
Page 15.
I I just feel as representing the taxpayers, we see enrollment going down, salaries going up. I mean, how is our local people's fault that, you know, students aren't attending, attendance isn't going up? When does the administration take responsibility to get more students in here? To to actually make the income, the pay for all this stuff and not just slough it off on the taxpayers?
I would, I would say Shelby, sorry to interrupt you, but I think those are legitimate questions. That's discussion that needs to happen. That's why I presented the budget calendar as a whole. We don't have time tonight to do that. But we do need to make time at an upcoming work session to delve into that. You you need to have that question discussed and answered.
I just feel that this is a presentation of if you don't raise taxes, we're going to, it's doing. But I understand, we talked about it later. It's just, I just wanted to.
Yeah, all I wanted to show you here is what's, what could happen if we change, first of all, the salary scenario because we really need to make a decision for our negotiations. And when we presented the update in March, we were showing a recommended salary increase for next year of 3%. As we've reflected on that and looked at what's going on in the economy, the difficulty that we're having hiring people, we don't think that's in the best interest of the college to only budget for a 3% increase for our staff and faculty next year. So what I wanted to show you here, and this shows on page 15, on line 18, a possibility of changing that to a 5%. And we will need to talk to you not only in a work session, but also in an executive session because this is going to be something that we need to get a consensus of at the board moving forward in negotiations. So I would just wanted to today kind of give us some foundational information that we can use for future conversations regarding salary increases. So the.
Does a teacher's salary automatically, would an administrator's salary have to go up to match that legally?
Not legally. No, they can be done separately.
I haven't seen the administration bring us any more students in nine years. So.
The faculty are responsible for bringing students to. It's not just the administration. It's the entire.
You guys are in charge of the college.
Well, it's a, it's a complete effort. It needs to be.
Works in charge of setting all the policy.
We could talk about it now, but we'll be here till about midnight. If that's what you want to do.
I just don't want to wait.
What I, what I, what I intended to do was to just isolate a couple of variables. So I could show you what would happen if we changed these variables.
My thoughts. So I had to, I had to say what I was thinking. So.
Okay.
I get it. I understand what you're, you're showing us. We need to keep in mind that we're not always going to.
We need to keep in mind that we're not always going to have a surplus over the unencumbered cash number. And we'll be looking ahead that what we do each year, especially if we're, we're talking about, if there's a discussion about reducing. The amount of taxes we're taking. That number's going to start, that, that delta to our unencumbered cash number is going to start sliding down. And I think this is just some examples of how quickly that could happen.
When do we as a board get a business plan together that'll make the profit, the college more profitable? Because if we continue to go down this road, Julie ran, I ran, Kim ran on overburdened taxation. If the, if this administration and the board is so tone deaf, to want to raise taxes, three million a year over the next so many years. The public is aware of paying attention now. How do we safeguard the college if? Another trustee or two decides it's like, hey, we're totally sick of this, then we're gonna cut the budget to eight million or five million. And that's much more detrimental than appeasing the taxpayers. I shouldn't even say that to sound bad, sorry. And keeping them to know that we're keeping them in mind because they pay a third of our budget. And that this is just like, we need it, we want it, we're taking it. This is what this administration did two and a half years ago. We had a room full of people and it was just tone deaf, we don't care, we need the money. We got a million dollars if it's still sitting here, we didn't spend, and we can't spend it unless it's, you know, directed at IT. It's like, that's very tone deaf. We're only reason here, but good golly, it's like.
Can't win instantly, when, when is the right time in terms of our budget calendar?
But I mean, two years ago, they, they, they did it at the last second, last second, over the barrel. We have to decide this night or else, and it was, I'd prefer not to wait.
Yeah, it does seem like everything that's being presented tonight has been presented before, but then we're told we can't, couldn't talk about it then, we can't talk about it now.
That's right.
Because that, I, I have a lot of the same concerns. I mean, if there's, there's got to be more than two variables that are impacting a thirty million dollar budget. I understand that, but that it's being presented as highlight, very obvious, look at these two things and how they intersect.
Listen, I asked Kent to highlight those so they were obvious and so they were visible. They're not highlighted because they're the only two things that we need to talk about. I asked him for clarification and for ease of conversation tonight to highlight those lines so you could see them easily. And highlight them on the budget so that they corresponded, that's.
All Kim Brungart saying is you're taking this data point, this. We don't have the taxes go up, this number will go down with no other variables, that's the only point of that.
Would you, would you prefer that we didn't present any kind of information for conversation?
That being disingenuous, and when you say stuff like that, it's. You shouldn't say, you don't want, you don't want a graph of any kind? No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying this graph, it only presents taxes versus.
That's right.
Right, but where is like? Where's our business plan to bring in more students and more revenue? But where's the business plan if we're not going to raise a single dollar in tuition? And then now we don't have as much money unless we take the taxes.
I think it's, it's harsh to say disingenuous when, when Kent was open up.
No, when she asked the question, you don't want a graph of any kind?
If I could address, what we wanted to do tonight was set some foundational. Uh, set a foundation for a couple of decisions that have to be made soon. And one of them is salary, so I'd just like to, to, to go through the next couple of pages, just on salary. To show why we presented the salary in this way, if I could. So on page um. Age. Yeah, sixteen, I just wanted to show this graph. The first set of scenario, or the first scenario that we looked at had a raise of um. Three percent for the um. For the twenty-three year. Four percent for the twenty-four year and four percent for the twenty-five year. And it gave us uh, the line which on this page shows as the blue line, I've shown that as the baseline. And so um, again, as I mentioned, we would like to uh, visit with you in the upcoming weeks. About possibly increasing that in the budget to five percent for the uh, twenty-three year. Now, in order to keep the, the um, unencumbered cash somewhat close to what the first scenario showed. We would need to lower the outer years um, to two and a half percent. And again, this is back to this point of not changing any other variables at this point in time. And trust me, when we start uh, changing some of the vari, other variables, uh, as you'll see in a minute. Uh, the graph's going to look a lot different. So um. Again, that's, that's what we wanted to show you for salaries. And, and basically that's the foundational piece that we uh, wanted to show you as we move on. Uh, during the next couple of weeks in discussion on that. Um, we would like particularly um. Again, to visit with you in exec session about this because that is a negotiated item. So like to move on uh, to the next three pages, which show what would happen. Again, if we take a different scenario with the local taxes. So moving on to page. Um, actually. Yeah, moving on to the next page, which would be seventeen. This takes the um, the compensation scenario.
Eighteen.
Well, I was just going to look, talk about the, the variables which are on page, excuse me, eighteen. And what this does is um, lowers the mill levy on line nine. To an amount. That will keep the taxes to be levied on page twelve. At the amount that was levied for um, the current year, Y E twenty-two. So in other words, no increase in the taxes to be levied over the next three years. And if we keep all the other variables um, the same as they were. And I think this probably leads into the discussion you want to have, Shelby. Okay, if we leave all those variables the same, what else would have to change? We don't have that answer for you tonight. But if we kept all the other variables the same. Um, the, the first graph that we showed you. Um, shows revenues from local taxes. That would um, more or less take advantage of the estimated uh, valuation increase over the next three years. If we don't take any of that. Valuation increase, then you can skip over to the graph on page nineteen. And you can see that this is what would happen to our unencumbered cash. If we don't make any other changes uh, during that time. So again, I think this goes back sort of to the idea that uh. Was alluded to earlier, that we have a lot of one-time money right now. If we give that money back. And offset that with money that goes into the budget on an ongoing basis. It doesn't take long for unencumbered cash to drop significantly. Um, so again, we can talk about this as much as you want tonight. I, I think it's more a topic that needs to be looked at in depth. Uh, at a work session where we more or less uh, would dedicate an entire session to this topic. Yes.
I was just looking at the line and I added the tax amount of twelve thousand nine, twelve million nine twenty-eight, one thirty-eight for year twenty twenty-one. On page seventeen. And I, I know that I keep hearing you say if nothing else changes. And am I to assume that the taxation for Butler County will be pretty much this? And even though we continue, even if we continue to plummet students, there's not gonna. You did say, providing there are no changes anywhere.
Yeah, I'm.
So I'm, I'm going to assume that we're going to continue to drop and still we're going to have higher taxes. And I know that seems funny to you, but what am I missing in that?
I'm not, I don't think it's funny at all, quite frankly.
Zero decline, just flatlining enrollment, which is not.
I think we need.
But that's what it's based on.
We need to have a conversation about, okay, if this is going to happen, what, what else is going to change at the college? You know, we have three major sources of revenue. We have um, an expenditure budget that's at least seventy-five percent um, personnel. So are we going to cut personnel drastically to do it? I mean, you know, that's a conversation that I think you've got, you've alluded to that you want to have. So we need to have that conversation and what would that, the effect of that be and where would that be? Uh, these are not questions we're going to answer tonight.
We, we don't have to answer before this budget either, but I hope by next year's budget we'll know. Sports locations and have more data, we have more discussions prior. I don't expect anything like that in the next two months.
But I think that the takeaway though, the concept is so much of our budget is personnel. It's, it's not feasible to simply say, to one of Julie's points from a meeting or two ago. If your revenues go down by fifteen percent, why aren't you cutting fifteen percent in cost? It doesn't work that way when personnel is the largest cost component. And whatever percentage of our personnel are represented, we are extremely hamstrung in how we can handle decisions.
But if we did an analysis and did Pareto principle of twenty percent of our programs are gonna make us eighty percent of our budget. There's going to be twenty percent of our programs that cost us eighty percent. We need to identify that and possibly cut it if we have to. I understand their teachers and their jobs and their work and their heroes, sixty percent of them are from Wichita or abroad. And taxes are all paid by Butler County people, eighty percent of the kids are from abroad. There's a lot of community colleges right now, it's like a small amount of kid. I would like to see us differentiate ourselves from everybody else and do something courageous and. Inspiring to people to get up to come here and not just do everything everybody else does. And there's nothing different than Butler, except we're a little less expensive.
Shelby, if I could, I'd like to go back to something you said, because I think it's, it's exactly right. I think what I heard you say was that you'd like to see us bring you as much information over the next three, you know. Month or two months to make the best decision you can at this time. But I think I heard you say, there's sort of an understanding that it's going to take more than that time to really, if we want to consider at all. More drastic um, changes and whether those changes would be appropriate. That this needs to be an ongoing conversation, even probably beyond.
I'm not saying I want to do any of it, I just, we don't have the data to even make the decision.
Yeah, we don't have that.
And I, I, I would agree that that conversation needs to happen.
Right, this is my third budget I've approved without really having all this data. I specifically.
So I would, let me, I mean, to your comment about doing some innovation things, innovative things and do some things that are differentiators. Do a, a quick elevator speech just on.
Well, I just want to say a couple of things too. I mean, you remember if we cut programs, that means we're cutting enrollment too. So we, we want to, we want to.
Program that costs us money versus what if we cut massage therapy? That's something we didn't need, we have to remember, consider.
Right, but our, our programs also enroll students in other areas too. So you start cutting programs that will impact enrollment. Um, but I will say, you know, be, be, we have launched many differentiator and innovative ideas. Uh, but I would say the one thing that we're missing, and I know we've talked about this earlier, is the marketing component. Because we can do all these things and we can talk about them. But if, if the people that we're trying to attract to the college don't know about them, we're, we're just, again, we're going to not see our enrollment increase. Because nobody knows what we're doing over here. And it's, and that's where we're going to get our population from is, is from the West, because that's where it's growing. So I think, I think we need. I do think we want to advocate for growing the marketing and growing our brand presence uh, to the West of us, because that's where our population's growing.
What I'm, I'm talking about specifically is like the culture, like Mary and I last year said, we want the board, just as a board. We're all adults, we talk about everything at college, we don't endorse CRT, we don't endorse it, whatever, just make the statement. We couldn't even make the statement, so we're just like everyone else. But in a conservative community, if we had the gravitas to say to the courageous stand like, they want to teach at the school, we don't care. We honestly don't, we're just, we don't endorse it. So if a student wants to say, hey, I don't agree, they agree, you argue, that's college, battle ideas and then you crow a little bit. If we could say that, just simple word, in one sentence, people would be like, do you hear Butler County? Doesn't mean it wants to pod, just something like that. But I just see it's all doing the same thing everywhere all the time.
Actually.
We all have billboards, we all have buses, we all have radio ads, TV ads, and we're all the same. Well, community colleges come here, save some money, go do four years, like, what's different than, besides location and price?
It, actually, it's the students who bring in the other students. The, your, your students that are coming from all of your Wichita schools and all of the other schools. They go back home and they start talking to their friends about Butler. And they start talking about, hey, you know, you've got an agriculture program that's a, a top-notch agricultural program. You've got a athletic program that's top-notch athletic program that sends, you know, some students to the pros. And you've got other programs that lead into it. And I could understand having people now that schools are starting to allow. Counselors and different people in to help market Butler. I will tell you that the ninety-nine percent award that we participated in at uh, in the Wichita School District. A lot of those kids came to Butler. And they were kids that probably weren't going to think about college. Well, if it was a few kids, who cares? A few kids is more than no kids. And so I. I, I. To a certain degree, education is not a nuts and bolts. It is the kids enrolling in school. It's the kids hearing from other kids, hey, come to Butler. You know, you will, you, you will have a student-to-teacher ratio that will allow you to succeed and uh. Uh, you know, uh, you attend a music program here, you attend some other program here. By golly, you're going to get blown out of the water. It, it's just the way it is and, and you know, uh. I'm proud to represent the people of Eldoretto who, who think a lot of this college, you know? And the people of Butler County who think a lot of this college, there's a lot of people. Uh, you know, that I meet along the way that are in the state, oh yeah, my kid went down to Butler. I was at a baseball game and met somebody's father, you know, and it was like, oh yeah, we're from Kansas City.
No, I, I really like Butler, all my kids go here, I graduated here, I'm not anti-Butler.
Can we get an organized? Plan of how we're going to do our work sessions, because these are all valid points, but I think we do need a couple more work sessions. Maybe we should have a rest week. I think more than this. Because an hour and a half would.
I don't want more meetings, but I think we do, it'd be, it'd be beneficial.
I think we need some scenarios, I think we need to say, well, what if?
I think so, Ken's spread it, he's kind of sounding the alarm bells. And I'm going to throw out something wild and crazy, please don't even respond, everybody just sleep on this. If we massacred our budget, cut it in half, cut the mill levy in half and we were these massive heroes. Then I personally would see a few, maybe two, three hundred dollars a year savings on my taxes. That's not going to make or break me, it's probably not going to make or break most homeowners. It, this is like a bigger problem and, and I think it does stem back to when the state changed how it funded things. You think of the most popular school district sought after, highly sought after, most prosperous, yada, yada, around here, it's Andover.
Blue Valley.
I'm saying around here.
Okay.
We're staying in Wichita.
She's right.
And, yeah, they don't allow out-of-district students in. If we're being told that, oh, it'll never pass at the state level, that all the counties are going to come in and take care of the community colleges. Well, what if all the community colleges band together, band together and said, well, then you can't come to our college? And you just for two years, maybe Cedric County would decide, oh, wait a minute. And you just for two years, maybe Cedric County would decide, oh, wait a minute. That's a real value to our residents. We need to make that happen.
We don't have any superintendent in those who will say nothing. We got kids coming in, no, that any student wants to come in to have that free college because they come in all the time from Wichita.
My point, my point being is desperate times, desperate measures, I guess. You know, I, I don't want to see this scenario happen. I don't think anybody in this room does. And we can sit here and argue till, till we're blue in the face over whether or not our mill levy is going to be thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. And it's going to really, at the end of the day, have a minimal impact on, I think, on each particular taxpayer. And it's not fair. The way the taxes are done at a state level right now are not fair. So we have to figure out a way to make them want to make it fair. Otherwise, we're just going to be sitting here screaming at each other every year, trying to save two, you know, five hundred thousand dollars, which doesn't fix the problem. You know, and it doesn't make Butler as a county any more attractive for people to come build here, live here, do whatever. And, you know, I, I think we do have a stellar product. So make people want to pay their part to come use it.
But one of the things I'd like to see, and I don't know, maybe I'm asking for too much here. They have a really unique report, very good report called the over under report that lists all the expenses that all of the departments have every month. And then it also has a cumulative year to date. It's very handy. And of course, it's, it's very, it's very detailed. To me, it's good enough. I don't have to have it more detailed than that. But I've also wanted a labor report. And the reason being is like at negotiations that I'm attending, usually what happens in negotiation applies to the entire college. So you can't just say it's only going to happen to the, what, three hundred teachers? It's going to happen to all the employees that work for Butler County College, which I'm not going to address good or bad. I'm just saying, if you don't have a labor report equal to the expense report by department, which I don't have, then how can I, how can you possibly anticipate what kind of effect it's going to have? How can you anticipate what negotiations are going to have? If you can't see that, I can even find it on our website and I'm not bitching at you. I'm just saying that I, I get on the website and I, and I see Mr. Riquelme's department is totally up to date. And he claims it's because he doesn't have a lot of turnover. Well, other departments aren't all there. A nice little synopsis of the department and the person that leads it on there would be so great for every student that gets on there just to see before they sign up and would sell the college, I think so much better than, no offense, but fifty thousand dollars with the banners on the buses in Wichita. Anyway, that's my two cents. So until I get that report that shows me.
More meetings, I think Mary's right.
Yes.
You'll call nice.
I need that. I need that info.
We're not going to have another work session before the scheduled meeting is met. Frank, because we have six, two weeks away. So I think the question is, we need to be thinking between now and May as to whether we think one work session at the end of May is enough before the meeting in June and then a work session at the end of June. And if we think we need one more in there, and I'm not saying we don't, I think there's a ton of discussion. And maybe we decide that our next work session is four thirty to ten instead of four thirty-six. But we need to decide how we want to do that because.
My suggestion is we go for May third, the Monday before our board meeting. And then we also have one on the twenty-third. But after that, folks, we're getting into holidays, graduations. So I, I would motion, or, you know, say that we need to have one on May third. Excuse me, May second.
So next month.
Correct. And we have an outline of what we can discuss, but I mean, maybe we need to break into little groups and say, okay, we're going to work on this and bring our report back. But all of us sitting in here debating and arguing, we're not going to get anywhere.
I'm not sure. I'm going to advocate for the administrative team. I'm not sure because Shelley's got payrolls that she's running this week. And I, I'm not sure that Kent and his finance people can put information together and have it ready again by next Monday.
Do we need more information?
I don't think we need more information.
I think we just need a discussion.
You what?
I just think we need to talk as a board.
Yeah, I do too.
Sit around.
They don't need to come.
We're a board, we gotta have it. They, they, that's their job to be here and support us. We don't want information at that time. We're, we're committing to be here.
That'd be a good ask question.
I have a few comments. Number one, I'm in favor of levying a mill that we can sustain, not just for one year, but for multiple years. I think we need to be looking at these budgets for multiple years, not just what are we setting today? A good example would have been had we had a very clear understanding of what different changes. I mean, Kent just gave us two variables, but if we knew what these changes and the impacts were, I mean, we get through the first semester, we know whether the budget's going down or not. When we have to make that decision later on, like we did a few weeks or months ago about tuition, we have a lot better understanding of, you know, where we're coming. If we have a three-year plan, we keep everything else like we've agreed, then what would the impact to tuitions be? Of course, I am not in favor of revenue neutral rates. I worked eighteen years in this county to build the tax base. This revenue neutral rate, yes, the appraised value goes up, but you have to look at how much of that appraised value is on the commercial side with new things. BG Products alone brings a tax base equal to two hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and fifty homes at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars each, their tax from one business. So we aren't really, the revenue neutral piece is informational to the taxpayer. If we aren't raising the mill levy, then yes, we are taking in more money, but we're saving them in a way from having to have the mill levy raised because we went to revenue neutral and we still need money. So, I mean, and I can tell you that I've had projects over the years that have raised the commercial appraised values by several hundred million dollars. And we've got lots of projects that are still ongoing. So there's that. But I would like for us to look at the three-year view, that we understand what we need to be changing as things go on. I'm not, I know everybody appears to think I must be some rubber stamp, but I want to look at all the numbers and I want to see what we do best. And I want to look at things that I've seen in the past by entities that made poor decisions by spending down reserves or not thinking about that. You know, we looked last month at, okay, well, here's an extra X number of dollars. We'll give it back. There isn't really a give it back because you give it back, you lower the mill levy, but you have to turn around if you can't sustain it and raise it back up. And I made the thing that aggravates me the most back when I still had a mortgage on my house was your escrow reconciliation. Now you need to pay an extra forty dollars a month. Oh, well, now they got that wrong. The next year you go down eighty and the next year you go up a hundred and twenty because they can't keep straight, you know, because your insurance premium changed. The same thing would happen if we start bouncing back and forth and, and that's hard. And I agree with Kim. I do want to save the taxpayers money. I, I don't want them to have to anticipate us raising the mill every, every year. But I think if we're going to be realistic about it, we can't buy a loaf of bread today or gallon of gas today. Well, we bought it last year. Not that gas is a good example or a loaf of bread, but I think we need to be looking at a much bigger picture, two, three years. And, and be in some, I mean, let's not fight about the stuff. Let's talk through it and say what works best and not picking on the marketing piece. But I mean, I think we have to realistically say, if you need more help, but do you really need more than your existing budget in, in new marketing monies? And, and by the time you hire the people, what impact is that really going to have on the first semester? I mean, let's think through this and let's approve things we can sustain and just make this easier and more informational.
I had a couple of points. The mill levy is kind of a reveling.
It is.
I mean, it's the total dollars that people are taxed. So right now we're at twelve point nine million dollars. Mill levy is going to fluctuate. Mill levy is confusing to everyone. I'm not sure it wasn't designed. But we're taking twelve point nine million now. Do we need to take more next year or is twelve point nine fine? And the thing is too, if you look at the last three years, we've declined enrollment every year, but we're not. We're planning to flatten out. It's like, well, that's not a proper plan. If we're truly planning for all the variables, we would plan a five percent decrease. Hopefully we turn things around and have a bump instead of.
So if we started the decrease, I mean, we can do that. Then we have to change some of these other things to make up for it. We don't want to raise. My point is the mill, the mill levy is what you're saying. I mean, it's somewhat irrelevant, except it has very little impact. If it stays the same, somebody's the appraised value that doesn't change or doesn't change much, it has very little impact on them.
And I, I would suggest that the impact of tuition of a hundred and two dollars a credit hour, a hundred twenty-two, five, it's a hundred and thirty dollars a credit hour to a student taken. That's the person who is using the service and that's the person who should pay for said service. And they should, you know, pay another thirty to fifty dollars per semester instead of the residents of the county.
So we can't change what we've already done. We can just look to the future and figure out what is that? And then I want to make one point. Along the way, we did a project and worked on graduates from Butler County. And it's all available at the state. So we took all of the high schools and we looked at how many graduates total. It's really a little over a thousand with all the high schools. And then they reported who went to four years, who went into the workforce and so forth. I mean, we, based on that information, if it remained, we'd only be getting five hundred students to maybe seven hundred at the most, but really not, about five hundred students a year out of our Butler County high schools. That doesn't sustain this organization. And, and like I said, I'm willing to look at all the numbers, but I, I don't want to have a, I do have a set mindset on the revenue neutral because I've worked with it for so long. But like I said, I'm willing to take a big look at everything, but I don't want to fuss. I mean, I want, say what you, say what you think. Let's.
Say it nice.
Yeah, say it nice. Let's talk about it.
Do we want, do we as a board want to meet next month or are we fine waiting until the May meeting and then scheduling something soon?
This is fresh. I'd, I'd rather meet.
I don't want to.
I do have other things to do.
I have one other comment, Linda, just to hit my mind when you're talking. Our county has not really grown at all in the last ten years. We've got like a thousand more people. So one point seven.
Oh, okay.
But anyway, I don't know. It's just, what are we doing as a county to grow? I mean, the college brings people to our county that don't live in our county, but it hasn't.
We'll talk to your county commissioners about not really having a economic development program for the county. It's the saddest thing for the largest county.
In charge.
Oh, come on. We do not have an organized economic development. We don't.
We also have a terrible plan when it comes to development. But one side of Butler County should have completely different zoning regs than the other half. It's night and day and the fact that they're governed by the same concepts are ridiculous. And we could be having so much more growth and so much, if, if we were forward thinking.
Flexibility.
Yeah, exactly.
Does, does four thirty, sounds like there's consensus to have a meeting next Monday.
Four thirty?
Four thirty or different.
Do you want it open-ended? How long do you want it? Do you want me to get food for you?
It'd be great.
I hate it.
Four thirty to whenever.
I think that's, I think David would be more than late enough.
Fourth, four thirty then.
Yeah, I know later than eight.
I can teach you guys some things.
Eat while we talk.
But we are, if we are in, we have consensus that we're not asking for additional information from.
We've got a lot, we've got a lot here to pull over.
I'm sorry, but can we have a flip chart in here too?
And we've got this whole budget.
You guys can have the flip chart when we leave.
We've got a lot to look at, really.
See things out there. We've got it coming up.
It is, it is six fifteen right now. Since, since, since we are meeting next Monday, do, do we want to have information request table to next Monday or?
No, let's go ahead and get it over with. So we can start on our budget first thing on Monday.
And then I didn't mean to catch you off. If you had more to talk about on the operating budget.
He's like, please let me stop.
No, I, I think we can move through this fourth topic. I don't know. I think fairly quickly. You know, there's some information in your packet that starts on, page, say, I guess my report is on page twenty-one. I can run through it fairly quickly. Julie, excuse me, Tracy Winslow really summarized some of this earlier. She asked for a report that would tie individual employees to the over-under report. On the last page of this document, I've sort of given you a summary of what the over-under report would look like. It's about a four hundred-page document, but it, it gives payroll, non-payroll. I wrote payroll, it should be total on that third set of columns there. Year-to-date actual budget and over-under amounts for every line item within that department. And so is our understanding that Tracy Winslow would like us to provide more or less real-time year-to-date information for employees that would tie in to that. We, we don't have any way of doing that in a really practical manner at this point in time. Two points here. We do have salary sheets and this is sort of the third set of bullets on page twenty-one. We do have salary sheets that are maintained by the accounting department that show the budget by individual employee that will tie back to the over-under report. That's how we've managed basically for the thirty-some years that I've been here. The other point I'd like to make, and this goes back to the, some of the one-time money that we have that Bill and I talked about, we would like to have in the future, some IT consultants come in and do a business process analysis of a lot of our areas to see if there are ways that we could improve the effectiveness and the efficiency of some of the reports that we generate. But at this time, we don't believe we have a better solution. There's not a record. So this doesn't really qualify as an open records request that we can comply with.
Wait a minute.
So that's, that's my point of view respectfully submitted on this report. And I'm sure Tracy Winslow would like your response.
Yes. On page twenty-one, you said that you do already have a Excel spreadsheet with detailed information that reconciles budgeted, it weighs salaries by department. Now, if you have them by department and they're by administrators, institutional support, coaches, operational staff, full-time faculty, that's pay code. There's some kind of code that's going to accompany all of these.
Yeah, I, I know that the information is there. It's within the bowels of the banner system.
But wait, is it in this report already? You write down, you, okay, you obviously do it in detail by department. Do you also include?
What we do for the salary sheet information that the accounting office generates is we get a list of employees and how much their salaries are from HR. So there's a reconciliation project, process between accounting and HR. We, we know which employees are budgeted. So every year, and we update this two or three times a year, we go in and we show what the budget is by individual. And then that's the budget that goes over to the over-under report. Then the budget officers see the year-to-date expenditures and they're able to compare that to the amount that's budgeted in total for their department, not by employee. Employees, some employees, their salaries are split between different departments. And there's no way that we can give a real-time, a year-to-date. a year-to-date expenditures, which is part of what you asked.
Well, I'm trying not to build this from scratch. So what you're telling me is you don't have anything like that, which blows me away, but I understand. I'm not in.
But I'd say if I could just respond to that, because I know at the meeting you said you didn't understand how we managed without this. The way we manage is that we know the individuals in those departments. We can see, but in each department, say we're halfway through the year, we know what the variance is, compare that to what is normal halfway through the year for that department, and if there's a discrepancy, then we can go back and look at it. You know, if we have unfilled positions or turnovers, it will affect that, and so we, we know that happens.
Yeah, last time I looked, you had 33 positions.
It's partly because we can't pay enough.
Well, and I understand employees being into, heck, throughout my teaching career, my, my salary came out of three, three funding sources.
I believe there's a correction that needs to be made. I believe Linda Jolly was at that meeting on April 12th. Am I correct? Yes, she are. Okay, just wanted to make note of that.
That's my bad. I would say, Julie.
What do you have already then? That can give me pay codes by department?
We have the.
All departments, and then all the pay codes within that department.
What do you mean by pay code?
Well, there's a pay code assigned to everyone. There's one for Kim as administration. She probably got the only one with president, so that would be her own pay code. Then there's one for you, which would be department head or department director of HR.
We say, when we speak of pay code, pay codes are things like vacation, regular sick leave, overtime, holiday.
Okay, what do you call them?
Classification.
Yeah, okay.
More of an employee class.
Okay, then classifications is fine.
Those are the classifications listed here on page 21. The classifications we use are administrator.
Right.
Institution support. Yeah. There are others, but these are the major ones. Those are the ones that Carrie has keeps in this Excel spreadsheet and updates two or three times a year.
What can you give me then?
We can give you that.
I would, I would like to see that.
We can give you that.
Okay.
I'd like to make one note to that, though. It doesn't have, it, it only lists their contract and how it goes by budget, so we don't add a column for where they are, like how much they've been paid at certain times.
So it's, it's budget numbers, not actuals.
Yes.
So how do you know where you stand with actual ones?
You can look at the percent, like, for instance, on that over/under report, it says percent spent. So if it's in December and your percent spent is at 80%, you know, you know that, okay, we need to make sure that some other departments are under budgeted. If this department's over budgeted.
Okay.
But when you look at how much has been contracted tied to a certain department, you're going to know that you should have enough to cover that. Like, that's the part that I'm looking at. Then if some, if there's something paid out of that department that shouldn't be, it's going to show up because you're going to have 80% or something. Percent spent in December. That's just an example.
Well, if you recognize file the budget report once a month, which is probably how you do it, with the actuals, I would assume you do.
That's too leveraged.
Yeah, I look at the contracted versus, contracted versus the funded, like, spoke to like two or three times a year. I do look at hiring proposals as they come through. So if someone gets replaced, I usually check what that other person was making. They replaced, like, kind of have an idea. That way, also kind of keep my, my mind, you know, you, you see things come through. You have a lot that's coming through that's a lot more contracted, a lot higher than the person that they replaced, then, you know.
So if we were getting ready to do the budget, and I asked you, how many people have you hired within the last five years, and at what would you call this? You don't call it pay code, you call it classification? You would be able to tell me that, or not be able to tell me that?
We would have to go back to the individual reports and do analysis.
I do it annually. I do it as a year. I don't.
Oh, okay. She's already done it for all the past years.
Yeah, I mean, we keep salary sheets for each year, and we have for like third years. That's. But I don't think we have those. I mean, I'm sure that those have not been updated.
We have them for several years.
Yeah. Yeah, or like for the past five, so that a person could maybe tell.
Well, those aren't updated every month or every two months. It's just that it's probably every quarter, maybe. But you constantly have open positions and people come in and people go. So, go ahead.
Sorry. I think what she's asking is, can we look at the positions over the past five years to see how the number of positions have changed? We've actually done that.
Where the growth has been. Looking for the growth.
Just total number, you know, asking for positions and vacancies.
Well, that's it.
Yeah, I'd like to know my department too, but, you know.
But we have, we have it more so by classification. So we did it, no. By administration versus institution support versus operations versus faculty. So we have.
I'm, I'm kind of, I mean, what would the information tell you that, you know, I mean?
It tells me how heavy we are in salary.
I can, I can tell you that educational institutions are always heavy in salary.
But.
They just told us it was anywhere from 75 to 85%.
Yes.
You go to any place, it'll always be that.
And we have done that.
Then, then you, you're not dealing with an education institution. But, but education institutions don't buy, buy furniture every year and things like that.
David, I just want to see where we've been, so that I could justify what the budget's going to be. That's all. That's what an accountant does, and that's my background. I'm so sorry.
The question we have tonight is, are, are you hearing a report that they have that gets you what you are comfortable with? Because if you want to.
I think it'll get me.
Okay, okay, if you're comfortable with it, that's fine. If you want to create something, then we've got to decide whether.
We want to spend the money to do.
Well, that's why I suggested.
It's not a core request.
Why I suggested consulting with BKB.
Well, BKB doesn't run Banner.
They don't, they don't do. No, but they do extrapolate a lot of information for their annual audits every year, and they probably would know how to get that information, but maybe I'm wrong. I don't think they do.
I would say, if what you're looking at is say, within department, how the personnel has changed, the way we could get that information, is they go back five years on the salary course, it would be a manual process to a certain extent. We can sort those by department.
Yeah.
And we can look at how many positions are in each department. This is something that would take the accounting office several hours probably to do, but we could probably. What do you think, Carrie?
Well, and Shelley could speak to this too, but if we're looking at positions in a certain department, Shelley, are there in Banner? Well, let me, let me start again. The salary worksheets probably would give you the, the number of positions in a, in a department or those classifications that we were just talking about. You talking about salary sheet?
Yeah, I'm talking about, yeah.
Unless.
I don't even know if I need dollars attached.
To run. You have a report that you can run just the position.
Yes.
There's a report you can run salary sheets.
Run by department, and you can run by what positions are in each org, and I, I did give Julie, I reported that. And then there's also, you know, a, you know, employee salary report that you can run. Here. So there are some things, this is how.
I don't want to do so.
Yeah, I think that's.
So I, I guess I want to, I want to know a little bit more about the needed value of a report like this as opposed to just having an overarching report that shows the changes in the number of administrative positions, the number of.
Have to get it.
There's a whole notch faculty positions, you know, on an annual basis. What, what's the value in having an individual report like that in the time that it's going to take these guys to.
Well, it's true. I'm trying to get something that you are getting. Very simple, what we're saying. What you're asking for is not a one-place.
We can pull together the total numbers of the changes of these different categories of classifications over a period of time. We could show you how the number of administrators have changed, or the number of institutional support positions have changed. Those total numbers, but it's not divided by individual position or individual person.
Or department.
Or department. I mean, I don't understand.
You can still hear the thing. It's in the hallway. Go turn it off.
Is there, is there something specifically you're looking for that?
Are you looking for individual people?
They would know what.
Thank you, or what? Because you wanted the org charts before too. Well, I was trying to figure out, I was trying to do it myself. I was trying to understand how many, how many were, were in each classification, understand how many were teachers, professors, overhead staff.
Is it so easy?
Support staff. Trying to figure out which. Are you looking for areas that you think are overstaffed? No, I'm just looking for, I'm just trying to understand how it can be so much. That's how it could be.
The salaries or the?
No, I, I just don't, I just think it's a lot, so I'm trying to understand what it all is. Maybe once I understand what it all is, I won't think it's so much. Does that make sense? No, probably not.
No, it does make sense.
I mean, but I don't want you to have to go to.
Is there a more generalized thing she can look at first, like what Kent was saying, and see if that, and if you have any follow-up questions, make a specific question on that.
I have to go.
Yeah, I would say that when I think about trying to help get that information, I think of it from a finance perspective. Shelley thinks about it more from the HR, which may be the better way to get value. I defer to her probably initially.
See, like, what if? You do have totals. You, you have told me that, so I know that you do have totals. You just don't have it by department. So you have totals by classification.
The over/under is by department, I mean, as far as.
Right, but that doesn't have labor in it.
That is.
Yes.
No, our reports are by department.
As personnel and non-personnel, not the group. No, not the individual people, no, but it has the total.
But not by classification.
Well, and in December, the over/under. In December, the over/under report basically showed that every department it, in the halfway point of the year, was someplace in the neighborhood of 45 to 60%. And I'm assuming that once they start getting into July or getting to the end of June, they'll have spent close to 100% of their money, including salaries.
That's generally, yes, that's free.
Did you smash it? Did you put it in the toilet?
Put it in the toilet.
You know, I'm almost to the end of my phone, so I'm due for new one, and it's got some problems.
It's got some perks.
It's got some problems with dog practices.
For, for all of the discussion and criticism that some have had, there's never been a question about, does the college manage the budget? So that's what, that's what I'm having a hard time understanding, what, what, where do you want to take this information? Knowing that we're 63% to budget in a particular department, that's just never been an issue before. We've never thought it was an issue before. So, and I'm, I'm not, I'm not, maybe I'm not articulating what it is you want, but I'm not understanding what, where you're going with.
I don't understand how you can possibly negotiate a contract without. Because you talk about the retention thing. Can't talk about it, never mind. We can't talk about any of this, but yet it's a big part. How do you know how that's going to affect one way or another without something?
Well, well, when you go through negotiations, you also.
Every department and every, and every classification. I don't, I look at that every day.
So you, so you know in your head how many people are in this classification, that classification, that classification?
Pretty much.
Okay, well, write it down for me. Write it down, and then, and then I'll keep trying.
I can give you a report that can be sorted by that. I gave you a report that has their salaries. I gave you a report that has their titles. I gave you a report that has their organization. But the data has nuances to it. You are trying to look at it from different perspectives, so I can sort a report for you and break it down better than you can. Why don't you let me give that a try again?
Yeah, because, look, I really don't want you to create any extra work.
Well, we already have.
I'm pretty sure that somewhere they've got, maybe I just need to come in the office and take a look at what you have.
There's, it's not that simple. It's not like you could, you'll look at a report and go, oh, that's it.
Oh, I don't know. I wouldn't be surprised.
No.
Do you know Banner?
I would.
I know Banner. Do you?
Yeah. Oh, really? Where'd you work with Banner?
At Aeroplus.
Where's Aeroplus?
Out West.
They have a banner for higher education systems?
They have banner for their finance.
Oh, well, that's not the same.
But it, the tools are similar.
They're not. I worked with other HRI systems, and this is nothing like it, so it's, it's a different type of system.
It's very different.
It's very different. If I showed you something that this report says, the report name is ZPHI123, you'd know what that was.
No, but I know if you gave me a, a legend as to what it means to you, because it means different.
Well, there's different reports that have different type of information that you, that are pulled from, from different sources, right? From different areas, databases in the system. So when you want multiple things of data, then we have to create a report to get that, because it doesn't live in one place. So I could give you a salary report, but it's not going to have, it's not going to have year-to-date, what they make year-to-date. It's just a flat salary that's out of the system. I could give you this thing that's coming out of payroll, and it'll give you a different number. And so there's lots of different ways to look at it, but not all in one combined report unless we build it.
So, and so that kind of takes me to the conversation earlier in the budget process, when we talked about that, the business process of that analysis, and then bringing in one of these banner consulting companies to help us build out these dashboards, so that it's easier for Ken's group and Shelley's group, and really everybody involved to be able to sort and drag reports from data blocks, that we haven't had the capacity to bill or to, to mine. So the data blocks, the data's in the system. The challenge is, we have data in the system and no real way to get good information out of the system in some areas. Now, there are some areas that we've, we've really built up over time, and as some of these questions come in, and we had a chance to look at some of these, and, you know, it highlighted that opportunity to maybe move along with another data project here, so that we can get good information.
Does anybody else that may see a need to look at stuff like that? I mean, maybe you don't, but does anybody else?
Saying that's what's coming, and right now, currently, do you just kind of see a bird's eye view? And if you deviate from what you expect, then you investigate to see what's going on? Is that kind of? Like, you know what you should expect, and if it goes outside of, you know, percentage of where it should be, you know there might be an issue?
Yes, I, I guess you could kind of say that, but overall, you know, when I do the salary worksheets and I look at what's contracted for each department, for those larger paid classes, classifications, as Shelley called them, I can tell whether, you know, I can see at that point, okay, this is what our budget was, and now we fired these people, and I look at it in fall or this, whichever, I can see if I need to, to increase the budget at that time. And a lot of times, there's like, need to increase it one department and decrease it the other, and it all kind of evens out. But when I look at that, you know, those two or three times a year, that's when I make those adjustments. So it's not just a bird's eye view. I'm looking at individual contracts in those departments, in those pay classifications.
Okay, well, I'm pretty sure you can look at that. Did you already ask, now that we've had more of the discussion? You'll give it some thought.
We can give you a report, but I think.
Well, you can always put it through the shredder, and shred half of it, so the little.
Hold it, hold it, birds.
Whatever you want me to not see. Whatever you have given to Julie, could you make sure?
Whatever you have given to Julie, could you make sure all the trustees get it, please?
Oh, I think they already.
Well, I, I gave, I just gave Julie a sample so that.
Oh, okay.
Could look and see if this was going to need or needs.
But I kind of, I kind of let it go after they told me that each of the pages took two hours to build, like.
No, the whole report took six hours to build. But I only gave you two pages, so I, so you could look at it and see what is this whole process. Tell me what the state is, is this what you want? If it is, I'll give you the rest of the report, because it was like twenty-two pages long.
Okay.
I didn't print it all out.
I'm ready to go home.
I need to ask commencement questions before you leave.
Tell us what you really do.
Okay?
Oh, yeah. I've got to respond to that email.
Did you look at my email?
Yeah.
All right, I need to know, uh, early college academy commencement or graduation celebration is May seventh at ten AM. You're in the Clifford Stone Room. Who can attend that? I need a, somebody to give a welcome, and then I also would like to know who else might be in attendance.
What date is that?
May seventh, it's a Saturday.
I have it on my calendar to attend.
So you'll be there, Dave?
I will be there.
Thank you.
I'll be there, I can give the welcome if nobody else wants to.
Graduation's a fun time.
Shelby, you said you'd be there?
Yep.
Okay. Downstairs?
It's downstairs in the Clifford Stone Room.
Mary Martha, you said you'd speak? I think you did the welcome last year, did you?
I think so.
They'll help you script comments.
Shelby's turn then.
Shelby, you want to give it?
Can attend?
I'll do it.
I'll speak somewhere, I'm terrified of public speaking, but I'll do.
Have Shelby do it.
Yeah.
This is a high school.
He did it last year.
I got lots of high schoolers.
So who's speaking?
Shelby.
I guess I will, sure.
All right. Donnie Featherson will work with you for scripted comments and stuff, okay? And it's the students that are graduating and parents and family and stuff.
I'll do like I did last time.
Yeah, he'll, I'll have him get ahold of you. All right, Nurse's Penny, May twelfth, Thursday night, seven PM, it's in the gym. The, as I indicated in my email, the trustees will sit in the bleachers near the front. Whoever does the welcome will sit on stage. But I need to know who will be at Nurse's Penny.
Can you tell me one more time what time that was?
Seven PM, you would need to be in the gym at six, about six-thirty.
Hey.
I have that down on my calendar also to, to.
I'll be there. Forrest, are you giving the welcome? What did you ask?
He's going to do the welcome at commencement too.
Okay, I can do the welcome. If anybody else doesn't want, I mean, if somebody.
We're going to make sure I get everybody. Shelby, you said you'd be there?
Yep.
Julie?
Yep.
Are you going to be at the early college academy one too?
I'd have Mary do all the talks, but she could just like tell them how great they are.
And cute earrings.
I can't. And she'll check. Okay.
Seven PM on the twelfth.
Yeah, I'll send you, I'll send you calendar invites, they usually try to, yeah. I, uh, if Mary Martha's speaking, they'll want you there just a little bit early to get lined up, but the rest of you can come just right before seven. And we'll reserve, we'll reserve some spots in the bleachers. A honor ceremony is Friday afternoon in the gym, May thirteenth before commencement's that evening, but at one-thirty in the, in the gym, and that's the one where we recognize our honor of the gold and honor of the purple, or sorry, order of the gold and order of the purple graduates. There's some scholarships that are given away or announced that afternoon. We recognize some faculty. And so, uh, you, you would sit, um, on stage, the board members would sit on stage, but we'll, I'll need to know because they set up specific number of chairs.
And what time is that one?
It's at one-thirty, that starts.
So we'd have to be here at one.
And it's on a Friday. I would say, yeah, you'd need to be here at one, you know, one-ten or something like that.
I'll be here, Dr. Pro.
I'll be here.
I will be here too.
I'll be here.
I can't forget that one.
Can be?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so I have Kim, Mary Martha, Linda can't be, or you can't be, and we can't be, okay? Forrest can't be, Dave, Shelby and Julie. And I need, uh, I think I need a, it's typically the board chair or the vice chair that provides the welcome, which is scripted as well. But it doesn't have to be.
We'll just have Shelby, he was the almost.
I don't, one, one's enough for me if somebody else wants to.
I have zero desire, so.
I was literally looking for a place to throw up before I got. So I'm going to go down this hallway and there'll be something.
I'm fine like one-on-one talking to people, but when you're up on a pulpit, if anybody doesn't want to do it, I'll do it.
I, I can do that one if, if you want to spread it around.
Well, you guys tell me. I don't know. Will it take long? It'll be scripted.
Yeah, that's fine.
Again.
That's fine.
That'd be.
Dave can be, is that what you're deciding? Okay. And then commencement is, um, Friday evening. We'll need to be at the stadium, uh, probably about six-fifteen, uh, we'll meet up on the second level. There'll be reserved parking for you and I'll get that map out to you, I don't know, they'll be right kind of where they were last year, but.
It's very nice.
Out to you. Um, and Forrest will be, if you're, you're going to be at commencement?
Yes.
Okay. Forrest will be the, the welcomeer and the helper at commencement then. So tell me who will be at commencement.
Me, good.
I'll be there.
Okay?
Yes.
Okay. Dave will be, Shelby?
Yep.
Julie?
Yep.
Okay. Good deal, because we set up again specific, and you guys are part of the, I mean, you get introduced and stuff.
If you, if you want to come to the press, if you want to come to the Presbyterian Church on Mother's Day, I'm giving the sermon.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I think I know. Okay. I will send you calendar invites.
Send me those.
Yep.
Yep.
And the master teachers are on the fifth.
Where's your minister?
Your substitute preacher.
Yeah. Yeah, it's.
Eldorado Room ten forty-one. I, that's why I have that Eldorado Room. Half the time I put this stuff on here.
Oh, that's in the, that's. Why, the week of what? Where do we? Our last chance.
And so, um, we're not going to.
I get it.
And then he's going to be gone, he's going to be gone in June, I think.